Fill this meeting with your presence. Come bless this gathering with unity, hope, and vision. Grant each of us humility to always seek your will in all that we say and do. Come and lead us to a greater awareness of those around us. Father, open our eyes to see their gifts and their talents, their problems, and their concerns. Encourage each of us to become a...to help build a community that's built on compassion and respect for all. Amen. All right, Katie, it's yours.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge...
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Katie, if you will kind of come around and shake a few hands. I know your family has to go somewhere. God bless you. Thanks for having us out here. Oh, I heard that down there. Thank you, Katie. Good night.
And if I can, I will, at this point, introduce our Fayetteville-Cumbin County Youth Council members. Ms. Gina Neighbors from Massey Hill High School, she's here with us tonight. And Mr. Stephen Farah?
Brandon.
Oh, good. Okay, I was close. Pine Forest, there with the Fayetteville-Cumbin County Youth Council. They're here and they will grade us at the end of this meeting as to how we do. And thank you so very much for coming. We will now open the public comment period. I understand, Madam Clerk, there were no one signed up. I will tell you that in...
Two speakers.
Two speakers? Okay. Which two speakers do we have?
We have Mr. Richard Breeden and Judge Ammons.
Okay. Judge Ammons promised me that if we let him do the public comment period, he would be real short so the rest of you all could get out of here. If he doesn't hold us to that, then you can't leave. I got the bailiffs ready to go. So if you call our first speaker.
Our first speaker is Mr. Richard Breeden.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Richard Breeden. I live at 2608 Cheney in Dogwood Acres. I'm here in opposition of Case P-1646 and would like to ask all of my fellow neighborhood residents to stand in opposition. Your meeting on 16 April 2017 deferred the case to no specific date. I was afforded the opportunity to speak my position, however, I am now to understand that no public comments will be allowed when this board chooses to hear this case. I came to this information from the minutes posted on the website. The residents from the area were allowed to believe that we would have an opportunity to be notified of the hearing and participate in the public comment section. That is not what the minutes have recorded. We support our tourism overlay of the crown and request our commissioners reconsider their position of no further public hearing, notification of residents involved. Again, thank you. Mrs. Mary Packer was not able to be here tonight due to medical issues, but she asked me to read this in her stay. Due to medical problems, I could not attend the meeting tonight. As you know, I sent each of you an email requesting that Mr. Breeden and I be allowed to speak during the meeting when the vote is actually taken on Mr. Keith rezoning request. As previously stated, we were not properly informed as to the fact that we would be able...unable to speak again on the issue. We should have been informed of that. I ask that the board give us the opportunity to speak. Your vote will affect everyone in the area and delaying the vote does not change our opinion of our feelings of reference, the issue. We deserve the opportunity to be heard tonight of the issue and we should be notified when the case comes before the commissioners. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Our next speaker is Judge Ammons.
Thank you, Chairman Adams. Thank you to all the county commissioners. My name is Jim Ammons. I'm a 57-year resident of Cumberland County and I work in the courthouse. Registered deeds Lee Warren and I are here tonight representing 14 current and former members of what I would like to call the Cumberland County Courthouse Community, and I'd ask them to stand at this time. We would like to formally present our petition and request to name the Cumberland County Courthouse Building in honor and memory of Judge E. Maurice Braswell. Each of you should have received a copy of the petition and a copy of the biography of Judge Braswell marked Exhibit A. And just tonight, we delivered a letter from retired clerk of court Linda Priest marked Exhibit B. As you can see from Exhibit A, Judge Braswell was a decorated WWII combat veteran, a former POW, a man of God who taught adult Sunday School, an intelligent and learned attorney who never stopped trying to improve himself and his profession, a fearless prosecutor who prosecuted the grand dragon of the South Carolina Ku Klux Klan in the 1950s, a teacher of the law to other attorneys and judges, a trial and appellate judge who exhibited courtesy, fairness, and impartiality to all who came before his bench, a loving father and grandfather, a devoted husband, and an exemplary public servant to the people of Cumberland County for over 50 years. But perhaps his greatest gift to our community was his foresight. He saw in the late 1960s that our 1925-era courthouse was not sufficient to accommodate the civil and criminal needs of Cumberland County. He spearheaded the effort to build a new courthouse that led to the construction of this building we're in tonight, which opened for business in 1978. This building was designed with room to expand to meet the future needs of our community. I worked in and well remember the old courthouse on Gillespie Street. I have had an office in this building for 35 years. This building has served our citizens well for 39 years. I truly believe that if not for Judge Braswell's vision and tireless efforts, this courthouse would not be here today. We, all of us, urge your consideration of our request and your favorable disposition of our request. Any of us would be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge Ammons.
If I could, Mr. Chairman?
30 seconds.
30 seconds.
That's how much you have left.
What I wanted to remind you is that this building was built on a 3-2 vote. So without the leadership of Judge Braswell, we may be having this meeting in the historic courthouse tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you all for coming and thank you for the documents you submitted. So thank you so very much. And I know with all of that firepower, y'all probably have to be somewhere else. So I'm gonna give you a moment to go ahead and exit so we can continue with the rest of our business. Thank you so very much. I can get rid of people. (laughter) All right. State Four-A Wrestling Champions. I call on Commissioner Lancaster.
(inaudible). You're going to take care of the board?
I care about what's going on.
Come on up here, let's do it. Is this man? Can he pin anybody in here? That's what we're going to do. How about bringing up our state champions right here? Your name?
Michael Burgal.
Senior.
This is junior.
Junior and senior, and it's our pleasure this evening, and we're sorry that Adelaide director Matthew McLean didn't...
What about the other one? You got two of them.
Well, let's see. Who's number three? You're number three. Number three right here is a senior and won his second consecutive state wrestling title and his teammate, a junior. Michael finished unbeaten for his first state wrestling title. Now, face these guys right here and pick you at once.[648.04][648.04](laughter)
You better go to the end. The middle is kind of rough now. You better go to the end.[656.12][656.12](laughter)
This one's easy, leave me alone. Stay away from this one. Charles.[663.66][663.66](laughter)
I'm gonna sit on him though.
He's a heady way. Don't mess with Michael down here, okay? But congratulations, gentlemen, and that's a great honor. And you have anything to say about... You see anybody out here you want to take off?[684.23][684.23](laughter) If you'd like to try these guys, they said they'd see you after our meeting this afternoon. I understand y'all have a pretty good girl softball team out there this year. Tell us a little about the ladies out there. (inaudible). Okay? Win the state. I guarantee you guys don't even pay attention to the girls.[721.12][721.12](laughter) You do, okay? And you see, you're going to be graduating because soon. No hollering, screaming. We don't want anybody dragging you out of the ground call to see you. God bless. Good to see you. I'm going to go ahead and...[734.41][734.41](applause) Always a pleasure. Yeah, come on back up here. We're kidding, ladies. Hey, let's get a picture. Come on, Marcy.
Y'all suck.[741.41][741.41](laughter)
Thank you.
Thank you.[744.41][744.41](applause) You remember 170s. That was years ago, Mr. Fairclough.
Not really.
You know, and it's because we take the time to recognize these students in our community, the youth council, as well as those that won state championships, because that is our future in this county. And we want to make sure we always recognize them when they're doing exceptional things. There's a lot of stuff in the newspaper, all the negative stuff, but there's a bunch of positive stuff going on in our community. And if we don't take the time to realize that, nobody else will. And so I know it lengthens the meeting a little bit, but I think it's the right thing to do. So with that, I'm gonna come down and I'm gonna call on Ms. Kelly Bean, our assistant county clerk.
Is she a wrestling champion too?
Yeah.[794.54][794.54](laughter)
Come right on up.
I'm all proud.
You know, nothing gets done by yourself. And so today, and I think all of these commissioners, you know, this is probably the only county in Cumberland County that has two certified clerks. And I'll probably tell somebody to go check it out. It's not easy to be done. But having met all the requirements prescribed by the UNC School of Government and the North Carolina Association of County Clerks to the boards of county commissioners, Kelly Bean was awarded her certification as a North Carolina Certified County Clerk on March 28, 2017. I think that's a round of applause.[832.12][832.12](applause) To qualify as a North Carolina Certified County Clerk, Ms. Bean successfully completed all of the course requirements of the Clerk Certification Institute at the School of Government and passed, ooh, passed, the institute's written examination. So it's School of Government, University of North Carolina Chapel Hill. Kelly Lynn Bean is hereby certified as a North Carolina Certified County Clerk. Congratulations. Thank you for joining.[866.62][866.62](applause) All these citizens academies know I like to take pictures, right?
Hey, her parents are here. Oh, he didn't hit that. Where are they? That's them to all come forward. Come right on up. Y'all come on up. Y'all come right on up. This is no small feat.
(inaudible).
All right.
I thank both of you for making the announcement. Thank you. Thank you so much for your job. Thank you. Thank you for the...
Come on, Miss Kinnon. Kinnon, come on right here. Come right on.
Yes, yeah, that's right. Squeezing them down here.
It's a private.
One, two. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Kelly.
And no, she doesn't get the rest.
That is a major achievement, and we wanted to make sure we recognized that. We've got the recognitions of our Citizens Academy graduates and Ms. Sally Cannon. John's right there. John's gonna call out the names, and if you would all stand, and then we're gonna come and get a group photo.
Okay. John Bradford, Armande Brown, Scarlett Burgess, Damian Cox, Casey Dill, Amy Gilbert, Brian Graybill, James Haney. If you hear your name, go ahead and stand.
You gotta write this.
Paul Johnson, Dorothy McNeil, Jamie Moore, Sabrina Patterson, and remain standing. Jimmy Platter Sr., Jimmy Platter Jr., Janelle Premann, Joanna Quick, Michael Reed, A.J. Riddle, Gerard Roberts, Shamika Ross, Tammy Sinclair, Mary Welch, Cindya Weatherwax, Mark Walderman, and David Wilks. And if you all would, make your way around to the front and shake hands with the commissioners. And wait for a picture.[977.12][977.12](applause)
(inaudible).
Thank you all.
Thank you.
And that's our class of Citizens Academy members who came and learned more about county government. Thank you also very much. These commissioners really do appreciate the time and the effort that you put in to learn about county government. So thank you so very much. All right. I'll call on Ms. Cannon for any changes to the agenda.
No changes this evening, sir.
We will, except for the deletion...
Yes, sir, of the first item of business, which is item number four.
Okay. With that, I'll call for approval of the agenda.
Some move.
Second.
It's been moved to second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
There's the consent agenda in front of you. I'd ask everybody to review the consent agenda, and if there's no action, I call for a motion.
Second.
Any questions? It's been moved in second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Item number...
County manager.
Item number three, Mr. Chairman, are our public hearings. First, we have an uncontested rezoning case, Case P-17-16.
And Ms. Cannon, if you could explain the procedures for the public hearings for us?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Thank you.
First of all, arguments by the proponents and opponents shall be limited to a maximum of 10 minutes for each side. If there is no group representative, each speaker shall be allotted a maximum of three minutes until the 10-minute time limit is attained. Rebutts will only be permitted at the discretion of the chairman with a maximum of one three-minute presentation by each side. Mr. Lloyd.
Yes, ma'am. This item was heard at the planning board last month. It was recommended approval unanimously by the planning board as well as the staff. It's a rezoning of almost four acres from A-1 to R-30 residential out at the intersection of Maxwell Road. It does have East Ever Sanitary District water and sewer, and there was no opposition at that meeting.
I will open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers?
There are no speakers.
I will close the public hearing. Any questions or comments from any of the commissioners? If not, I call for a motion.
I move that we find the request for rezoning consistent with the 2030 growth vision plan and any other applicable land use plan reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons stated in the recommendations of the planning staff and over.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any questions? All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Call for a motion for the second, for a second motion?
I'll do that one. The second motion would be on the case of P-17-16 to move approval of rezoning for R-30 residential.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any questions? All those in favor?
Unanimous.
And Mr. Lloyd, let me interrupt you for just a minute. I'm sorry. I would like to recognize, because one of the planning board members is here, Dr. Vicky Andrews is in the back, she serves on that planning board. Thank you for serving on that board. Madam manager.
Item 3B moves us to our contested rezoning cases. Our first contested case is Case P-17-13. Mr. Lloyd?
Yes, ma'am. This is a request of rezoning from RR to CP, I'm sorry, C-1P Plan Commercial, and it's for a convenience retail with gasoline, sales, and a restaurant. There is, the subject property is shown in a hatch pattern. Again, it's a little more than three acres, located on 301 Mobry Road intersection, to the east of that, or to the west, I'm sorry. Current zoning in the area consists of RR Rural Residential. There is other C-1P Plan Commercial, and to the north, there's CP Plan Commercial. Current land use in the area shows single-family housing in yellow, commercial in red, and a church, number one, shown in blue. Aerial view of the subject property. This proposed commercial will be served by well and septic. Site plan shows a proposed store with a privacy fence and then truck parking or pull-in area shown where the cursor is. The planning board rec...we'll go through the photos. And this is a more rural area of 301 South. The planning board recommended denial of this, filed a staff recommendation unanimously recommended denial of this application for a number of reasons. First and foremost, it is well and septic. Two, it is not consistent with the 2030 plan. And three, with the proposed truck pull-in, which these are 18-wheelers, not pickup trucks, even though DOT may require a curb cut, that still would cause a lot of congestion with trucks coming in and out of that area. As the planning staff stated, there is other vacant commercial in the area you may want to show. So with that, the planning board recommended denial of this case. And I believe we have speakers for and against.
I think before we go to the speakers, I've got a couple of, I don't know which one came on first, I think Mr. Booth, Commissioner Booth.
I just have a couple of questions. On the bottom, CP one diagonally across from it, do you know what the intended use of that one is, right there?
No, sir.
Okay, all right. And are those plans for the driveways and stuff, are those schematics done by our staff or was it their plans?
Their plans.
Have they been approved by the DOT for that driveway access?
No, not at this point in time.
Okay, thank you.
That would be one of the conditions, if it was approved, that it would have to have DOT approval.
Okay.
Mr. Keith?
Thank you, Mr. Lloyd. Currently, you haven't had a note of the traffic count on that road is, right now?
Not in this particular area. I think we do, but what's the closest traffic count?
All right, I'll go on while Patty's getting that information. Do you know if there's any proposed improvements to that street scheduled on DOT?
No, sir.
Okay, so currently, how many lanes do you have in here?
Two.
Two lanes, and are you looking for 18-wheeler traffic coming in? Is that, am I understanding that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Average daily traffic count of 10,000, but just on Highway 301 South.
That's the main road that we're talking about. That looks like the only place where they're gonna have entrance and exit, though, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, there's no back end to the road.
Now, there is, believe it or not, there's a, what many of you would recognize is the pit stop to the south off this, I believe it's off this map, isn't it? And also, there's another truck stop a half, an actual truck stop a half mile away.
That C-3 that's up in the top corner, you flip by it, but what is that?
It's vacant, isn't it? I believe it's vacant.
Right, right.
That is vacant.
Not the CP, the C-3.
The C-3 is vacant. I believe the C-1P, or the CP is the trucking, is it not? Right.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have any other questions?
All right.
And this proposed commercial will be served by well and septic. Site plan shows a proposed store with a privacy fence and then truck parking or pull-in area, shown where the cursor is. The planning board rec...uh, we'll go through the photos. And this is a rural area of 301 South. The planning board recommended denial of this, filed the staff recommendation unanimously, recommended denial of this application for a number of reasons. First and foremost, it is well and septic. Two, it is, um, not consistent with the 2030 plan. And three, with the proposed truck pull-in, which these are 18-wheelers, not pickup trucks, even though DOT may require a curb cut, that still would cause a lot of congestion with trucks coming in and out of that area. Um, as the planning staff stated, there is other vacant commercial in the area you may wanna show. So with that, the planning board recommended denial of this case. And I believe we have speakers for and against.
Uh, I think, uh, before we go to the speakers, I've got a couple of, I don't know which one came on first. I think Mr. Booth, Commissioner Booth.
I just have a couple of questions. On the, the bottom, CP one diagonally across from it, do you know what the intended use of that one is, right there?
No, no, sir.
Okay, all right. And have, are those plans for the driveways and stuff, are those schematics done by our staff, or was it their plans?
Their plans.
Have they been approved by the DOT for that driveway access?
No, not, not at this point in time.
Okay, thank you.
That would be one of the conditions, if it was approved, that it would have to have DOT approval.
Mr. Keith?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Lloyd. Um, currently, you haven't had no traffic count on that road is, right now?
Not in this particular area. I think we, we do, but what's the closest traffic count?
All right. I'll, I'll go on while Patty's getting that information. Uh, do you know if there's any proposed improvements to that street, uh, scheduled on DOT?
No, sir.
Okay, so currently, how many lanes do you have in here?
Two.
Two lanes, and are you looking for 18-wheeler traffic coming in? Is that, am I understanding that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Uh, average daily traffic count of 10,000, but just on Highway, uh, 301 South.
That's, that's the main road that we're talking about. That, that looks like the only place where they're gonna have entrance and exit, though, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, there's no backing to that.
Now, there is, believe it or not, there's a, um, what many of you would recognize is the pit stop to the south off this, I believe it's off this map, isn't it? Um, and also, there's another truck stop a half, uh, an actual truck stop a half mile away.
Yeah, that's C-3 that's up in the top corner. You, you flip by it, but, um, what is that?
It's vacant, isn't it? I believe it's vacant.
Right, right.
Right, that is vacant.
No, not the CP, the C-3.
The C-3 is vacant. I believe the C-1P, or the CP is the trucking, is it not? Right.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have any other questions?